And what are their monomers?
And you remember the macromolecules, macromolecules, or also polymers? And remember the little thing I said way at the very beginning in the first lecture I said that that life forms itself into change.
Yeah.
And this is an example. So what are the, there are really three macromolecules when we sometimes compute the protein. It's not officially macromolecule, but it's okay. What are they?
Carbohydrates.
Okay, I, 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 sorry, this is an important topic. Proteins, carbohydrates.
Lipids.
Lipids. Let's put the other true polymer up here with the nucleic acids. Ah, see. And then lipids. And remember I said officially liquids aren't really, they're really fall category of polymer. But so, it's okay, they're still very important relative to our molecules. So that's, so that's what I mean by those.
Okay.
All the things are made of all of those, you know, every one of those. Now, what, what are, so this is the polymer, the, you know. What are the monomer units? Not another word they made of. And remember the idea of a polymer is just that it's made of whatever the monomer units are used over and over and over and over. So what are the monomer units for proteins?
Amino acids.
Amino acids, yeah.
Okay, now what about carbohydrates?
That's glucose.
Yeah, you said glucose, but we'll just say simple sugars. But, but, um, but glucose being the main simple sugar, not the only.
Phytose, sucrose, yeah.
The, um, simple glucose, I'm not just saying simple sugars. Simple sugars. Talking, writing. Nucleic acids are made of ribos, deoxyribosases. This is different, glucose, five particles. So what are the units of nucleic acids?
Nucleotides.
Nucleotides, yes, yes, yes.
That was the one, I forgot.
And then lipids, we can just say, uh, what's wrong with fatty acids, that right foot? So that, that would be the idea. And, and the reason I introduce these, the reason I want you to know them is we've talked a bit about proteins already, then we're talking a little bit about enzymes. But we're going to be talking about nucleic acids, so to keep this in your mind, then we have to talk about, here's how they're got, here's how they're put together, here's how they're made up. What about functions, if I ask you function?
No.
Function of proteins.
It's the builder, it's the builder molecule.
It's the workers.
Yeah, yeah.
But you can say enzymes, structure, energy, completely always like. What about carbohydrates? Energy is major, structure also. Lipid, same thing, you know, we say structure or more energy.
That's cell structure, right, for liquids, yeah.
But also internal, there's some, I think, where they'll bind maybe proteins or something. But then nucleic acids, nucleic.
Those are information.
I want to think of the name, or you can say the genetic information, or just information.
The genetic, yeah, it's genetic information.
But we'll, you know, again, these are things, we'll be talking a lot more about nucleic acids coming up. So it's easy, man. Um, no, I'm wondering, no, no, not, nothing's coming, but yeah, I'm going to do the rest. But what I didn't get to, and won't be on this test, respiration, cellular respiration, I'm going to go with that.
There's, there's a guy, there's the door. You lucked out, we saw you.
Okay, so, um, that's okay, I'm gonna break. Go ahead. What else?
I do, I don't want to take everyone's friends.
No, it's what we're here for. You're probably gonna ask what you want to know anyway.
Yeah, for, for enzymes, right?
Uh, yeah. How do they control the action?
Enzymes. So if, if an enzyme, you know, they have the active site, right? But if it, if it only has an active site, that means it's always there, it's always there, it's always working. If whatever it works on is around, it'll, it'll catalyze. If there's an alsteric site, now, how did I word it?
He said, what is the alsteric site on those enzymes that happen, and how do they control the action?
Oh. So first of all, what is the action?
Uh, it.
It, it's a catalyst.
Catalyst.
It's catalyst.
So enzyme, so the action, action is to catalyze a reaction. And what do we mean by this?
Speed it up.
Speed it up. And I'll say a chemical reaction, just a RXN combined with a reaction. Okay, so, so, uh, an enzyme, uh, the active enzyme is to speed up some reaction, that's all. So we're not talking about what specific reaction, because, you know, every enzyme has its own reaction that catalyzes. But so if you, if you just, most enzymes probably don't have an alsteric site, so that means they're always there. If they're, if the enzyme is around, and whatever they work on is around, does this go ahead and catalyze?
Probably, definitely.
If it has an active site, or an alsteric site, so we'll say it. I like to use something that has an alsteric site. And something, if something hooks onto that alsteric site, that'll actually change the shape of the molecule that's stopped it from working. So, um, so, so if whatever, and by the way, some molecules is exactly, some enzymes without alsteric sites are exactly opposite. That you need something to hook on there to make it go. But I just want you to realize that I'm giving probably the majority of the way I'm saying. There are also, but anyway, the point is this, that if there's some, if there's some molecule that fits in there, so here's some molecule. We say if it fits in there like that, then, so we'll say if this molecule, whatever it is, is in the alsteric site, it stops the enzyme from working. So it's just, um, it's not, it's just, that's why I said it's a regulatory site, it can, can regulate whether the enzyme is working or not working. It, but it regulates it if whatever fits into that site is there.
And that's generally the same thing that it produces, right?
Generally, it's some, often it's the end of the chain of order is, but yes, it's usually, but, but more often than not, I think, yes, what you're saying is whatever you're ending up with, whatever the final product is that you're trying to make, that, that's what hooks in here, so that you don't just keep overproducing whatever.
Yeah, 'cause when the environment comes rich, one finds its way in there.
Have enough around and stop working to go over. Because, you know, there are some diseases, they're actually called storage diseases. Uh, but they're, they're a disease in sense that you can't, not you, I'm not saying you, the person with the disease, of course, can't regulate certain, uh, molecules. There's one that, that copper, they can't regulate how much copper they have in their body. And so copper starts filling up their cells. There's another one with iron, I know some people with this one, it's called hemochromatosis. And normally you control how much iron you take in, you don't, it's not very easily absorbed. Uh, and you know, you know, so you're taking a small amount, and when you have enough, you'll take it more. These people can't control it, and so they keep taking iron and taking, and then the iron starts clogging up their cells.
Well.
Uh, there's another disease called caseitis disease where it happens in their mitochondria, if the mitochondria aren't able to break down some product. And so it starts building up the mitochondria that stops functioning. So, you know, you don't want your cells being filled up with junk, you know? It's, it's normally things you nicely control, so you have what you need, and what you need is not there. But that's what I'm saying, that's why in something like this, you, you know, you don't sell, quote, doesn't want, not, not provision. Wanting, but even you want it filled up. Yeah.
How would, how does temperature affect the, uh, function of the enzyme?
Okay. Yeah, the good question, and, and, and I won't be on the exam, but I'll quickly answer that, is if, if you raise the temperature a little bit, most enzymes will work faster. I mean, they'll catalyze more reaction. But if you start, if you raise the temperature too much, and we're not talking too many degrees, then you start changing the shape of the enzyme, and it'll stop functioning. So that's why, you know, you heat up enzymes, you heat themselves, you know, they're gonna stop functioning. But up to a point, yes, you know, enzymes, you know, in fact, what we're gonna do next. Well, you know, we'll take yeast and try to get them to this temperature, temperatures. And they'll ferment at higher and higher temperatures faster, and then to get to a point where you kill off yeast. Anyway. Question, anyone questions?
Uh.
Carrie, you have a whole bunch of questions, I know that.
I'm doing her mouse chance. The top one on my mind was, I was actually looking through my notes and wondering how well we went over thermodynamics.
Went over.
Thermodynamics.
Okay, well, so, if you're still about thermodynamics, I didn't, you know, we're just sort of touching on what, what it means, but what is, what does thermodynamics mean to us and the cell? You know, that's why we're trying to get to.
Uh, well, I was gonna tell you, a lot of thermodynamics is the same as a lot of energy, energy can neither be created nor destroyed, merely changed from one form to another.
I didn't quite understand, although I think you said.
Merely can other, energy can never be created nor destroyed, merely changed from one.
So, so, so the first one, okay, so the first one, I should say first, first law is, as you said, energy cannot be.
Created nor destroyed, merely changed from one form to another.
Energy and not be created or destroyed. Okay, um, now I want to leave a little space here. The second one says that, uh, in all reactions, the law says the entropy increases, but we don't want, we don't want entropy. In, in all reactions, um, uh, more disorder occurs.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and another way to say it is, you know, heat, heat, some of the usable energies given off is heat, we go that way too. Let's say in any reaction, more disorder is, more disorder. And that's that word entropy. More disorder, entropy goes up, more disorder occurs. So, um, uh, or, you know, some of the usable energy is lost, is heat, you know, there's a whole bunch of ways of thinking about it. But what I want to think about is what does this have to do with the cell? So, I mean, there's a third, third law of thermodynamics, you don't really need to worry about that. What's this have to do with cells? Energy can't be created or destroyed, but it can be, but it can be changed, right?
Yeah, changed from one form to another, yeah.
But can change forms. So what's an example of changing forms with respect to, uh, um, say a catabolic reaction?
Yeah, that is, that's what I was gonna say, where it stores the energy, it breaks down.
So.
The ability ATP.
ATP.
For example, say, for example, say sugar, there's, there's stored energy in sugar, all those chemical bonds, right? The chemical bond is sugar.
Six carbon sugar, yeah.
Can't, if, 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 but, you know, and we can burn sugar, I mean, you could burn on stove, but we use the same word, burning, catalyzing. Sugar in our cell, we don't do it one big thing, we do it stepwise. But there's a lot of energy given off. So it's given off, so what? To make us warmer, yeah, it would make us warmer. But we can't take that sugar and burn it, and just burn it, and then, hey, make us, give us some energy to walk. We have to have the energy in some form that we can use to allow us to walk. Or some form to allow us to make, put amino acid there, make protein, whatever, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
And just burning the sugar doesn't help us. We need to be able to convert that into some usable form of energy. It's still a chemical bonded energy in this case, but with sugar, we'll say sugar is, I use the word burn. And ATP is made. Now, the thing about ATP is that's, we think of that as an energy molecule, we got that, that molecule we can use for, for, you know, for muscle contraction, we can use it for synthesizing with proteins or carbohydrates.
For the catabolic reaction, right, is, is, it's the catabolic that uses it?
It would be, it would be, when it is used up, it would be a catabolic reaction.
Yeah, when they're, uh, yeah.
But it's coupled, it's essentially joined with another reaction.
During the anabolic. Okay.
So, so that's what, so, um, but what does this say to us? We can change the form of the energy, but where do we get, yeah, sugar, I mean, we don't.
Oh, we got it from plants, dude.
We've got to take it in, we've got to take this energy in, in some form, in this case, you know, on the sugar cell. So we have to take this in, and then we can burn it, and then we can actually use it. Some of the energy, see, trapping some in that molecule that's a usable molecule for us. Um, now what about this, in any reaction, more disorder occurs? And that seems to violate the fact that cells are incredibly ordered. Right? I mean, if, if life, living systems are incredibly organized, or ordered, you know, they're incredibly organized. And yet, second law of thermodynamics says that, you know.
The more reactions, the more energy.
Oh, you have all these reactions getting less order, less organized. How can that work?
Okay, we're a chaotic beings?
What, what do we need to do to keep? Go ahead. Yes, yes, we need some input of energy, some constant input of energy to the earth, to the biosphere, to the living systems here. We need some constant input of energy to run this. And that input of energy, of course, as you said, is the sun, so that we can, you know, photosynthesis, make the plants, and make the sugar.
The sugars, yeah.
So even though, so, but by doing that, plants, you know, animal cells, plant cells, bacteria, whatever, they're incredibly organized. But at the expense of disorder in, in our environment, or if you look at the solar system, that's part of our system, certainly the solar, certainly the sun is becoming, you know, it's burning out. I don't really need to worry about it.
They know the date now, it's a long way off, but they calculated.
September thirteen. Yeah, I know, they.
They have the date though. My dad worked in aerospace, we know that.
That's totally worth, I want you to think about in terms of thermodynamics, what do those things mean? You know, and, and, you know, this means that you can't just, you, you, you can't just do anything without some energy source. But then you take that energy source and we can convert it into some form, usable to us, presumably. But it also means that we need this constant input of energy in order to maintain the organization of all biological systems on earth. I, I, I hope these ideas kind of give you appreciation for how complicated it all is. Anyway, how about some other questions?
Um, oh.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so that's, uh, the, 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 the. Not that down here, but, but you, you you can just have that in the back of your mind, how about having that in the back of your mind? And it won't be, but officially, I won't ask anything about cellular respiration. I, I do.
The cellular respiration, is that what?
That's how, she was looking at, on the second page, the, I'm sorry, that, that second, check the third paragraph down.
That's what I, I was looking at too.
Cellular respiration is obviously extremely important for your cellular cells, since there's, since that is how most of ATP is formed.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I said, we will learn about ATP formation before synthesis later. Um, excess for synthesis, it should have been from synthesis, sorry, I've seen mistakes. Uh, and how it's used by plants and sugar, plant cells, you cellular respiration. So that won't be on the exam. Yeah.
In the lab today, um, this large molecule is too big to get through the bag.
Right.
Would exocytosis remove a large molecule from the cell? Would that allow this to be?
Yeah, not from a, not from an inanimate bag, but maybe, maybe from a real cell, yeah. Uh, yeah, bags can't do these sorts of things, it would, real cells might do. And certainly they do, they do, if the, if the cell was trying to secrete a, a protein, for example, protein's too big because of the cell membrane. It would let it allow exocytosis.
We need to know, like, how that process works, you know, like, you see.
Just, I want you to know that it can work. And, and the nice thing about both exocytosis and endocytosis is that the reason it works pretty easily is that cell membranes are so similar that, you know, you can get two bits of cell membrane that can join together. Uh, and it's, it's the phospholipid part that can do that. Remember, I showed you that happens, and I don't, I'm not gonna ask that on the exam. But it, it's just, I mean, it's just kind of cool, because those phospholipids from once, from one membrane to another, they're all similar, so if you have two cells that get together, don't just open up the cell, or you just put something off, pinch something off at the same time. Yeah, yeah.
I was wondering if we could go back to when we first started and remind me how we know how many protons, neutrons, and electrons are in them? And how we know if they're positive or negative?
Sure, let's do that. And, and it's actually straightforward, once you understand the idea. Um, so what are those terms? You wanna use the one that's on there, I think, where did I use?
Sodium.
Sodium, let, let, you just use that, what, what synthesis on, so, so sodium, N A is sodium. And you, you're not memorizing symbols, so what, what did I give you?
If the sodium atom has an atomic number of eleven, it is.
So this one says atomic number equals eleven, can I give you atomic weight?
Atomic mass of twenty.
Or mass, atomic mass, atomic weight, same thing, right?
Yeah.
Equals.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, okay. So, start with atomic number, once you know the atomic number, then that tells you how many what?
Electrons are in it.
Okay, but start with a bigger thing.
Oh, pro, oh, protons, neutrons?
Okay, protons, this is how you protons.
Yeah.
So this number right here says, okay, so eleven protons.
Oh, 'cause sometimes the electrons are different.
And since atoms are neutral, it'd be eleven neutrons, I mean electrons. Since atoms are neutral, you have to have the same number of protons as electrons.
To balance it out.
And eleven electrons.
But doesn't that change if you have a bond with it?
Well, you mean, change, what's, what's?
Do any of those?
Atomic number always changes, but you, you, you could say, hey, well, maybe we have it for sharing, a pair of electrons, doesn't it? But that's why I literally said catabolic. We want to talk about.
Molecule, yeah.
Molecules. So that way, that way it would be straightforward, not to worry about sharing. I didn't say anything about ions also, who are ions that gather, gaining or losing? Those are good things, I'm not against them.
If you lose an electron, it's positive because it has more protons in it, and that way, it's, it, the one, if, if it's balanced, it has an equal number of electrons and protons. If it has one more proton, it's positive, has one more electron, it's negative.
Protons are staying the same.
Oh, yeah, 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 right, okay.
So if you gain an electron, you're gaining a negative.
It adds charge, and if you lose one, you get a positive charge, okay.
Okay, but now, so, now, so now, once you have this, once you have this, this is gonna be straightforward. Then you say, what, atomic mass is, is twenty-three, so I have to subtract eleven from it to give me, uh, twelve. So that means there are twelve, twelve neutrons. I mean, that's simple, there's nothing hard about it, you know, and not much to realize about it. Just have to know what atomic number means versus what atomic mass. And if it says atomic mass, you could also say atomic weight, you know? For practical purposes, yeah.
Well, uh.
But did, wait, but is this still about this, because I want to make sure the answers to questions.
Um, how many, uh?
Then, then we'll come back.
Electrons are in the outer shell.
Okay, so now let's do the shells. How about the, the electrons, E minus, and the shells? And so we only did the first three shells, but how many in the first shell?
Two.
Two, eight.
Or inner.
And one.
Inner, um, shell.
It's two, eight, one.
You're gonna keep two, up to two.
Mm-hmm, and then the next one's eight, and then there's one in the last.
Next shell, second. Up to eight, third, up to eight, okay?
So on the.
So you just count how many there are, how many electrons are, eleven. So there's two in the first, eight in the second, ten.
And then one.
That's one extra, one extra to the third.
So you write up to eight, like on the study guide, you said, like, in the outer electron shell, there are blank electrons that you would say up to eight?
Yeah, up to eight, but now if you know how many total electrons there are, so if you know that's eleven, and I say, okay, how many electrons for sodium?
There's what?
I, I mean, how many, how many in each shell? You say, okay, two E minus in the first shell, eight in the second, and then one in the third.
So how would you make it stable?
Yeah, and so what would it like to be to be stable? I mean, remember, this is one extra that, you, you know, you wanted, to be stable, you'd have to have all the way up to eight. But the chances of that guy gaining seven electrons pretty slow.
Unless you have chlorine, which has seven.
He could give off, if he gave, if he got rid of that one, that little guy, that one last little guy, then he'd have two in eight, which is nice and stable.
Mm-hmm.
So, so we'd say, okay.
Give him sodium.
So if.
Or no chlorine.
If removed, then we have an A plus, the ion plus, and that's, you know, that's a pretty stable line. And who would I give it to, like chlorine, you see that to make sodium chloride?
So how do you know if it's positive or negative?
Well, atoms are always neutral, because protons, remember, protons, those are positive charged, electrons are negative charged. And an atom has the same number of protons as electrons, so they're neutral. If you lose a negative, you suddenly lost a negative, it makes you more positive. Right? Or if you gain electron, you're suddenly more negative.
So that's when we positive?
So, so, so if you lost, if you lost that, a negative charge, it made it, it was a positive charge.
And it says, and it would now be called an?
Ion, an ion. So this now sodium ion.
That would be positively charged ion.
An isotope would have a different number of neutrons. So in other words, if sodium had thirteen, if it had the same protons, if it didn't have that same number of protons, it wouldn't be sodium. If, if, if an atom has eleven protons, it is sodium, period, that's it. And you're not gonna change that unless you use some cyclotron and stuff like, but so for practical purposes, that can't change, right? But what can change is how many neutrons. Change that. Say if you had thirteen neutrons, or fourteen neutrons, or ten or eleven neutrons, then you'd say it was an isotope. An isotope, just a different way, because the neutrons are just adding weight. The protons, remember, these guys, these, they weigh one. They, sorry, weigh one, and the neutron weighs one. And I remember when someone asked me, why? The answer is atomic mass, you know, that doesn't really help. Anyway, but they, they definitely weigh to one, uh, and so you add up the number you add up the number of, uh, neutrons and protons needed to fill the weight, it's that straightforward. So an isotope has just a different number of neutrons. So, and, and I, didn't I say this is the normal sodium atom? An isotope of, let's say sodium. Okay, sodium would have, um, different number of neutrons. Maybe eleven, maybe thirteen, whatever. But how many protons would, would sodium have?
Eleven.
Always has eleven. If it wasn't eleven, it wasn't, it's not sodium. So, does that make sense?
So the protons always stay the same?
Yeah, it may say, yeah, it's broken, it's always there, yeah. Except in some radioactivity type things, protons always stay the same, you know, the number of protons. And remember, you know, in the old days, I told you, the alchemists tried to make, change one atom into another kind of atom, and they couldn't do this. I said, now you actually can, you can do it, but you have to use a few, you know, things like cyclotrons to do it, it's not practical to change, like, it could be done, but.
Yeah, with cinnabar and all kinds of other minerals, but.
Practical.
Yeah, it costs more to make the gold than you'd actually get, it's just pointless.
Anyway, okay, but that, is that okay on that, does that make sense?
Yep.
What about some others?
Um, where was it?
What are some of the differences between animal cells and plant cells, like, what do they have different in?
The main thing that we really talk about, of course, I mean, the plant cell has that single vacuum wall, uh, they've got a few other things in there that are called plastids and other things, sometimes they're like storage molecules. I mean, the plant cell has that single vacuum wall, uh, they've got a few other things in there that are called plastids and other things, sometimes they're like storage molecules, or things like starch and all that. But we didn't get into that, and I don't, all the main thing, I want you to think about the. Plant cells have cell, so walls, and animal cells have, so they have many cells. All cells have membranes, remember?
The the phospholipid membrane.
That's clear, that's clear, that all cells have cell membranes, without a cell membrane, you're no longer a cell.
Yeah.
So you're, you're not alive. Okay, so all cells have cell membranes. Some cells have cell walls, and plant cells have cell walls. But no animal cells have cell.
Uh, are.
And then, of course, animal, plant cells have protons. Plant cells have all the other organelles that animal cells do, they've got, they've got mitochondria, and then the mitochondria, molecules. But they have the chlorinase. A lot of the proteins.
I just wanted to clarify a question.
Yeah.
Uh, so the twenty-three is in that, it always comes by, or minus, in fact, the twenty-three from.
You just subtract the number of protons.
But like, you know how like, there's like eleven, that's the number it is on like.
Yeah, that's atomic weight, I mean, that's the atomic number.
Right, if the atomic number is, you're always gonna subtract the.
And that atomic number tells you how many protons, right?
Right.
And that's the same, would be the same number as that.
Okay.
You take that number, subtract it from.
The mass.
The mass, to give you how many neutrons.
Right, so that's how, that's how you're always gonna get your neutrons.
The the difficulty is if you look on, uh. The actual chart, in fact, if you look on the chart for sodium, they say twenty-three, it's not a whole number, it says twenty-three point seven. And that's because I told you, they take all the different naclyurecure isotopes of sodium and atoms all up together, so.
And come up with an average, yeah.
But I I'm taking what is probably the most common form of sodium. And that's why I need to hold them on purpose. Yeah.
Oh, I was just asking about, um, are all the cell membranes, are they all phospholipid bilayers? Even plant and animal, they're both phospholipid bilayers?
And 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 bacteria too, they're also.
Okay.
But then, of course, they have proteins, you know, on them, and that's what's gonna make the difference, they're all gonna be different.
Well, I'm just interested in the fact that they behave according to rules and made us.
Yeah, 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 no, no, but I mean, the part, and as I said, the phospholipid, the the nice thing in the proof, nice, is they can easily form, you can join them together and that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I have some others to the questions, yes, yes?
Um, on the sample questions, it says, the water molecule has partial charge on the hydrogen atom, and the oxygen atom, can I ask you to explain it?
It, it, it said explain, yes, yes, yes. And here's the thing to remember, it is. It makes, water's unusual, this one, you know, there are smaller molecules, uh, just like humans, flowers.
The way it connects.
But here's the oxygen, and it's so happened, I made, I made these really long. Covalent bonds or whatever. But remember what I said, I mean, thi- this this oxygen, this is an oxygen, this is an oxygen. There, there's a covalent bond, so there, what does that mean?
They're sharing a valence electron.
Pair of electrons. And this oxygen, same oxygen, is sharing a different pair of electrons with this hydrogen, right? What I said, and this is how you'd say, is that oxygen. The oxygen atom. I'm gonna put in here parentheses, likes. Electrons. Really likes. You know, in in chemistry, they use the word electron, but they have a, it 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 cool electrons to it. So they like electrons, and the hydrogen, you know, they, it has this electron, but it can kind of let it, you know, it's got a half, I mean. It it can easily let it go and float off as a hydrogen. Ion, you know, if you're, if you're an acid, that that doesn't happen. It happens occasionally in water molecules, but let's just say it's the water molecules. So oxygen atoms, I'll say, and oxygen atom likes electrons. And so, the shared pair. The shared pair. With. Hydrogen. The shared pair of electrons with the hydrogen. Spend more of the time around the oxygen than you do around the hydrogen. And and ones that don't do this, like carbon doesn't do this. The shared pair of electrons are pretty much spending the same amount of time around the two together, okay? So they're they're bouncing around the two together, which holds these things together, that's why they're called a bond. So the shared pairs are like that, and most of, most covalent bonds. But in the case of water, the oxygen likes, has this strong affinity for the electrons, so they're spending more time. So that shared pair is spending more time around here than it is around here. And electrons are what charge? Negative. So therefore, you get this partial negative charge here, which means it's a partial positive charge, you're the same thing here. And and, but that's not a full, what, not a full negative charge, a full positive charge, these are partial. Partial. Partial, and when I'm saying partial, I mean, partial positive charge, a partial negative charge, partial positive charge. And and, so, so, so let's, let me write that, so an oxygen atom likes electrons, so the shared pair of electrons, the shared pair, we're talking about the pair that they share. Hydrogen, the shared pair spends. More time. Around the oxygen, around. The oxygen than. Hydrogen. So, so that shared pair of electrons spends more time around the oxygen than 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 around the hydrogen, I should say. And this gives that partial charge. There's a partial. Negative charge. I'll say to each. Hydrogen. Does that make sense?
Yep.
The next question is, so what? But it's actually a big deal, because that means that, you know, you have water. The oxygen has a partial negative, and the hydrogen has a partial positive, but that means that. The ne- the water, the next water molecule next to the side, the hydrogen, of the next water molecule, the one next over there, is gonna be. Hold closer to that oxygen, because plus and minuses attracted to it, right? And and the hydrogen will be attracted to somebody else's oxygen. The point being that there, that means there is an attraction between each water molecule and each neighboring water molecule, and those are attracting their neighbors, they're attracting their neighbors. So therefore, all these water molecules are are held together, and we're stronger. Now, if we were talking about ammonia, or, you know, ether, or some other, you know, liquid. There's not that that attraction, I mean, e- each ammonia molecule is next to its neighbor, and it's happy to be next to its neighbor, it's not unhappy about it. But if someone came, came over there and said, hey, hey, uh, I wanna s- s- get in between you two ammonia molecules, it wouldn't care. But what if someone said, hey, I wanna get in between two, you know, let's say you're a a fat molecule, I wanna just get in between you two water molecules? No, they don't want somebody getting in between them. That that, this isn't charged, because then it's gonna disrupt this nice, happy, close knit environment. Now, if it's a charged molecule, like a sodium ion, or a, uh, maybe a hydrochloride ion or something, that's fine, because then, the 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 positive sodium will retract the neighboring oxygens, and the neighboring chloride will retract the positive hydrogen. So they could just, okay, we'll just rearrange, we're happy to do that, we have plus and minus, we don't mind that. But you try to get a lipid in there, that it might be charged to it. And it's like, hey, I'm 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 close to my neighbor, they don't get any trouble. Does that make any sense? And of course, it causes other things too, it makes water have a high surface tension, which, as I mentioned, you've all been aware of, if you tried to dive in a pool, you gotta value the value. Um, it 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 has a, it means that it takes a lot of, takes more heat to disrupt this, so water can absorb a lot of heat before it, you know, it takes a lot of. Energy to heat up water or to cool off water, which is why if you live next to the ocean, you know, the temperature doesn't vary as much as if you're next to like the desert, where it. It heats up and cools off fast, but water heats up slowly and cools off slowly. Because, you know, you have to disrupt all this nice ordered environment. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah, and so, and so most, water has like a high heat of air, because it has all kinds of unusual properties, higher than most other liquids, certain other ones are, you know, it's different. And and the other thing about it, just for your interest, you know, if you're looking at, uh, like a, in a pipette, you know, you have a pipette, and and you 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 have water in it. If the water kind of does that on the side of the grass, it's not perfectly flat, it's a little bit of a side. And that's because, you know, what we call capillary action, but, you know, water molecules, each molecule pulls on its neighbor, and, hey. So so it makes water have a lot of unusual properties, it doesn't. So actually, it turned out to be very.
I just have a question about surface tension.
Yeah.
Whenever you, like, let's say you're diving, you know how when you you pierce it like that, it separates, it breaks it? Why is it when you like belly flop, it doesn't break it? Because I mean, that's a bigger.
Surface area.
It's just a big fat surface, yeah.
Yeah, it's a larger surface area, creating more resistance to the work.
Yeah, you just wanna, you know, you have too many more molecules, you're trying to break up.
Those are ways you're breaking a smaller group of molecules.
Yeah, yeah, it's really interesting. And if you put detergent, actually, I had a way back in my chemistry in high school, the the guy who was a chemistry teacher, worked for one of those. He he he, he worked on one, some big company that developed detergents, I mean, all or one of those detergents, he, he had worked on, you know, years and years before. And when they first made these detergents, they're actually better than regular soap. They they work the same way, but it has something to do with the size of the molecule. But it, but but what they do, they lower the surface tension, they they have that, they have some hydrophobic in, hydrophilic in, they swab onto fat, and, you know, flush it away. But anyway, they tried putting it into, uh, they said, hey, if it lowers the surface tension, let's put it in swimming pools, so that if you're learning to dive, it doesn't hurt so much to do a belly flop. It actually was, you know, a little irritating on the eyes and all of that, but still, it did help to lower the surface tension, so they didn't ruin themselves. But. The next day, they go, and there were always insects.
Oh.
Because, you know, insects would come down on the swimming pool, ordinarily, they ran the swimming pool, they'd stand up, and then.
It has a high surface tension, yeah, yeah.
But in this case, they hit the land, and.
So great, and that's so funny. So it works if you leave a pool cover on, otherwise, yeah, yeah. That's funny.
But so, but but that's, yeah, that's correct, interesting, yeah, yeah.
The also the bilayer, that is, the phosphate and the fatty acid tail, that's whether.
Exactly, and and the bilayer, because you have the the fatty acid tails, but one layer wanna be next to each other, and as far away from the water as they can. And heads wanna be next to water, because you have water on the outside of the cell, and water on the inside, so. So the thing about those is they, you don't need an enzyme or some, something hooking those guys together, or even. The the membrane, membrane will just kind of form spontaneously, relatively speaking, not totally spontaneously, but relative. Uh, so that's one of the reasons why it's kind of neat.
Yes.
Phospholipid bilayer, which is easier to form. Anyway, yeah.
So why is involved the membrane referred to as a mosaic?
Oh, yeah, yeah, now, what is.
That was my.
Mosaic, it's a good question, let's, let's.
Because if, even if it's in the, in the lecture, I don't remember that.
It's not. It it it's not as meaningful to you guys as it would be to me, because when I first started learning about this stuff, they didn't have that model, and and over the years, they. They were trying to develop a model of the cell membrane that that would make sense, you know? In other words, when they make a model, they want it to make sense of the information they have. And and but originally, they just thought, well, they knew about the phospholipids. So, so let's do cell membrane. So they knew about the phospholipids. Phospholipids, plus protein, they knew about proteins, you know? But, you know, and they pretty much thought that, A, you know, something like all membranes, phospholipid, and they did have proteins on it. But starting around the nineteen sixties and nineteen seventies, they they started realizing that, man, proteins on the cell membrane of a liver cell. Are a little different from the proteins that are on a nerve cell, are a little different from the proteins in the cell membrane of a, say, of a plant cell, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They're going, oh. Well, they're they're not all the same proteins, you know, they just sort of just, yeah, mishmash of proteins, which were pretty much the same shell in the cell, and they probably just helped form the structure. But then they started realizing, no, 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 these proteins have all kinds of important functions. And I gave you functions of my lip- membrane protein, remember, things like channels and pumps and receptors, structure, you know, enzyme, okay? So, so they started realizing, hey, there's all kinds of different, different proteins depending upon the cell membrane. So, so these, so these, the different. Different proteins. And different cells. A lot of the proteins may be the same, but there's still a lot of proteins that are different, different proteins in different cells. And then they also, and I mentioned this, that some of those proteins can move within the cell membrane.
You you mentioned that.
The re- oh, the integral, integral?
Integral?
Yeah, some of them, yeah, I mean, some of the integral proteins can actually move within the membrane, it's like they can go and move in and out if they need to. Um, and so, the fact that there are different proteins for different cells, I said, hey, the, there's a mosaic. There is a mosaic. Of proteins. All that means is this is just different, there are different sets of proteins in different cells. And then. And some of these proteins, some of the proteins. Can move. Within the membrane. I don't mean coming in and out of the membrane, they're staying in the membrane, but they can move within, within the membrane, they can move around, they're not just firmly fixed in place. Some of the proteins are probably firmly fixed, but not all of them, so. So, the fact that that some of these proteins can move within the membrane, you say, hey, membrane is fluid. And I'm gonna put that in quotes. Because all that means is not, you know, if you, you, that's the thing, jello, a sort of a semi-solid thing, and if you make a jello, then you jello, and you have a bunch of things in it, like a piece of food or something like that. The protein's not moving around inside the jello, it's firmly fixed, right? And 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 that's what they thought that proteins were in cell membrane, but then they realized they weren't firmly fixed, they said, well, membranes weren't fluid than we thought. And so then they came, because of those two things, people who came up with this, they called it the fluid mosaic model.
Okay, uh, cuz that was the one thing, I mean, I didn't know why.
Yeah, just the idea. And this is the newest, thi- this came out like in the seventies, nineteen seventies. Uh, and but this is why it's called that, and and, um. For our purposes, the idea that some of the proteins can move within the membrane, that push, not matter what process. But the fact that so many different proteins in different cells is meaningful, and and the reason. Which I said several, many times, you guys, and I wanted to get to your answers, is that. It's the proteins in the cell membranes that are pretty much internally, what gets in the cell, what gets out of the cell. And that's what makes one cell whatever kind of cell it is, cuz remember, I've I've said so many times, that the membrane is an active part of the cell. It's not like, you know, a passive barrier, like the wall of the door over here. It's an active part of the cell, cuz in some cases, you know, those proteins will grab something and pull it in, or push it out. Or they allow certain things to get in, but not other things. So it's a very, you know, the the proteins are an important part of the cell membrane. And the cell membrane is an important part of the cell, not just as a passive barrier, but as an active participant in what the cell's doing. Does that make sense?
Is it concerning, like, you know, now?
Yeah, to mostly, yes, mostly. Yes, and that, and that, therefore, what can the cell do, you know, I mean, the cell can do what, it can act on whatever gets in, you know, but if it can't. Yes, and that and that therefore, what can the cell do, you know, I mean, the cell can do what, it can act on whatever gets in, you know, but if it can't, something can't get in. Jerry, you haven't even asked a question, I know you have some.
I do.
You wanna do now?
Yeah, I think I think everybody.
But what my.
I think you should turn it.
Well, thank you, Steve. Um we were just getting into glycolysis and anaerobic and fermentation and all that.
And running with passive fermentation.
Since you're going to, you're not including cellular respiration.
Which is what, cuz that's just more complicated stuff. I will talk about Monday.
You can always take it out.
But, okay, so what, you wanna say something, wanna say something that, what you what you just said, the fermentation one, glycolysis?
Well, you were talking about you're gonna continue on Monday, you said I'm actually really awake today, but you're gonna continue on Monday. But also on the same book that we're all kind of already here, so.
What, but what I'm gonna con, I I I wanna kind of quickly review glycolysis and fermentation on Monday, but I'll do that also right now. And then, yeah, I won't say anything about respiration. Yeah, but so, but let's just, let's just take, what is glycolysis? Just very simply, what is it?
Sugar, yeah, breakdown of sugar.
breakdown of, and and particularly glucose, which is a six carbon molecule. And 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 the reason for you can give you the numbers is so you can see what happens at the end. Okay, it's a six carbon molecule, breakdown of glucose. In several steps, and as I said, we don't care how how you say it, not memorizing steps. Breakdown of glucose into. Where we're getting out of. Two. Uh glucases.
Two ATPs, yeah.
Well, it's two ATP, now, we don't need to talk about these guys right now, just keep that in mind, this is more than we had to begin with, it's more than we had. They're one less sugar, and now we have two ATPs, and those are the things you're gonna be using to do something else, right? But it turns out that we can't stop it, glycolysis, something has to happen, the reasons that I'm not gonna get into. Something has to happen with the pyruvate acids.
One is, and one can save again, waste.
What what happens now? What happens, what happens? To these? I I open the two, and what happened to these, in each, I mean, cuz we're not just breaking down one sugar, we're gonna break down hundreds, thousands, thousands.
Ones released is waste.
So we're only looking at each of the things that say things going on. So what happens to these pyruvate acids? Now, this is a question, sorry. What happens to these? And it depends upon what type of organism you are. Okay? And we didn't get into the respiration, but that but, you know, all eukaryotic cells can do cellular respiration, and I'm gonna try to do that on Monday, we'll see what we do. And that's that Krebs cycle, electron transport, and we're gonna see that we get a huge amount of ATP. But if you can't do cellular respiration, you're probably doing what we call a fermentation. We don't get the trouble of fermentation. Cuz you don't get any more ATP, but you gotta do something with the pyruvate acid.
Isn't NADH also?
There is some NADH, we just hear what that was, isn't it? Uh I'm gonna talk about it when we get to Krebs now. I'm, I wasn't gonna talk about it now, but that is the reason why you can't stop it. Pyruvate acid, cuz you can make. I didn't wanna get into that. But you're right, absolutely right.
Well, why doesn't some of the, one of the pyruvatic acids we can, given off as waste or something?
Okay, it it can't just be waste by itself, for reasons that have to do with the.
Yeah, yeah.
So something has to happen to these, and so, so I gave you, uh, so in fermentation, so now, what we call fermentation. And there and and there's a lot of different fermentations that can occur, I gave you two examples, well, actually, the the first lecture section, I got into two examples. The second lecture section. I didn't get into re-dribble on Monday. But in fermentation, um. Pyruvate gases. Converted. To a waste product, some waste products. Um some waste product. And, um. It's, I'll just say to waste products, I'm gonna put this a bit, some, to waste products. Some of which. Are organic molecules. Organic molecules. When we do respira, no, I'm not done yet, but I I I I'll get you a question in one second, but when we get to respiration. We'll see that the waste products are irrigated, CO2 and water. But in the case of fermentations, wherever the fermentation is, and I get, and I'll give you the two examples. Pyruvate acid converted, some of the molecule, and at least some of the molecules converted. So for example, so for example, what we call, you know, when you're making alcohol, the yeast's do this, they take. Pyruvate acid. And by the way, pyruvate acid is a three carbon.
Yeah, three carbon, yeah.
If we haven't gotten rid of any carbons in glycolysis, you just have two.
Three carbon atoms.
So the pyruvate acid are converted into, uh, alcohol. Plus CO2, and this alcohol, two carbon molecules, it's a three carbon. By the way, I should say, pyruvate acid converted to waste products, which are organic molecules, but. No more ATP. So you can see, you don't get a lot of ATP from the. But you know, if you're a little yeast doing it, or a little bacteria doing it, that's okay, just eat a whole bunch of these and make a whole, you know, you can get enough ATP by. But anyway, so this is one example, this is in the alcoholic fermentation, pyruvate acid is converted, three carbons, pyruvate acid is converted into one CO2, liquid alcohol and. Um. And when you say you're making beer wine, you're probably, see if you get this away, if you're making bread, it's the same two, you're making. The other example I gave you was making cheese. With pyruvate acid.
So these are examples of the fermentation.
Two examples from the. But that, pyruvate acid is a three carbon, lactate acid is three carbon, so we didn't even lose any CO2 on this process. But this will be, we'll we'll make the cheese, uh this will happen, but but now lactate acid is the waste product. Again, that's maybe the details, why it's happening, it just it just does. But we actually make lactate gases, you know, most of the time. So you're saying that the example for the alcohol, bread and cheese? No, this would be, this would be, this one would be, we're making, um, wine. And beer, beer and bread. This example.
It's for cheese.
You're actually separate.
Two separate, two, these are, these are two separate examples, who's doing? Uh well, and I do want you to know about this, yeah, I I because that's as far as we got with fermentation, but but the but the point here, look at this. And 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 cuz it's. The real contrast is what happens with cellular respiration, I I didn't get your question, I know that was probably so far. But the real contrast will be with cellular respiration, then. If you're doing a fermentation, you you break your glucose down into whatever the final products are, but how many total ATP are you getting for each glucose? Each glucose should break down, you know, at two ATP. When we do respiration. Using the matter of time, you know, we start with this, but we'll end up with a total of thirty-six ATP for every glucose. Thirty-six ATP is a lot more than two for each glucose molecule, so it's a lot more efficient to do the cellular respiration. We'll come back to that in le- lecture on Monday, but so that but that's the, the one, the big contrast, why respiration's so much better in terms of making ATP. But not all organisms that ferment could do that, right? Most of these fermenting, that's the only thing they can do, they're happy, they don't know any different, they're just pretty fine, they just have to eat a lot of sugar. And besides, how many bacteria, you know, are are walking around giving lectures, I mean, they're just one cellular organism, they have a lot of needs, you know? But the other thing is that in fermentation, some of the waste products are organic molecules, so look at, see this, alcohol is organic molecule. We can drink alcohol and get energy, still got energy available, just the 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 cell that gave this off can't use it, it's a waste product. But other organisms can use it for energy, it's an organic molecule, so. On, you can bring, get some. See what I'm saying? And then lactate acid, that that three carbon molecule, you could actually eat lactate acid and get energy. Like you do when you eat cheese, you're getting some lactate acid in the cheese, or if you're eating yogurt, same thing, lactate acid is, you know, and and it's fine. It's just the bacteria that's made. It's waiting, they can't eat it. Now, request you.
So fermentation, does it always happen as a result of glycolysis as, uh?
Yeah, I mean, this is the first step, you have to break the sugar down to this. And then the organism, whatever the organism is, is gonna take these and do something else with it.
But, okay, what it does is different, it can be different, it's not always fermentation.
Well, certain organisms, that's the only thing they do. Um some organisms can do variety of things, um but but like our cells don't do fermentation.
We do transpiration.
A certain bacteria, you know, that's the only thing they can. Okay, uh so it just depends on the organism, although we can do this temporarily, but we can't do it for very long, you know, we do it for a little while, while we're. Running strenuously, you know, we'll make some active acid in our muscles, so we're doing fermentation, but then we have to stop, and when we stop. Then the first, this is converted backwards, pyruvate acid, then it does this normal thing, going through this. Krebs cycle and all that, so we really are aerobic, even though temporarily, we could be in, temporary, few minutes. That makes some sense?
Mm hmm.
Sorry.
Alright.
Wait, wait.
Uh maybe I missed this, cuz I've tried to find it in my notes, and I. But what happens when the, when atoms form and comet are gone?
You bit, that's that's members, formal fold, there's on.
Share share valence electrons.
And each member of that, each atom is just providing one of those electrons. And and the fact that they're sharing, see, remember, remember, the the electrons are going around the atom, or some type of shell. And if they're sharing a pair, then that pair of electrons going around both at the same time, or if you saw it happen with water. Oxygen really pulls the electrons towards it more of the time. So the sharing pair of electrons, the fact that they're sharing the electrons causes those atoms to be closer together, that's what we call a bond. Cuz by simple definition of a chemical bond is just some force that pulls that electron together. So if you just think of that, then, cobalt bonds are strong bonds. Yeah. This is not for atoms. Okay, but look, then make sure that you've got all your questions answered, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, but sharing a pair of electrons, as opposed to an ionic bond, where, you know, in an ionic bond, you take that sodium chloride, sodium. You, and and chloride, sodium gives an electron to this guy, sodium gives an electron to the chloride, so it's to chlorine, so it becomes Na plus. C L minus, cuz he had seven in his outer shell, and he wanted eight to be happy. Sodium has one in his outer shell, and he'd like to lose it to be happy. So if he gives one electron to chloride, chlorine, then he becomes the sodium ion, and chloride becomes chloride ion. And they're both happy, cuz they're, they both have an. Eight in the outer shell. We'll make status first after my. Uh what's the difference between DNA and RNA? We'll get to it, I'd rather not talk about it now.
They're both nucleic acids, it's the DNAs that are different.
Yeah, 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 good, good, yeah.
So with this, uh with that, cause this. Reaction right on, is a catabolic reaction?
It's a catabolic reaction, break down.
Because, uh, you break down.
Breaking down, and then it just given off.
Yeah, and it just given off, and then it also has that.
Form heat.
Energy is given off, but some is also trapped.
And some is trapped in the making of ATP, and the reason I say it's trapped is because this is the molecule we need to do other things.
So is ATP made as a result of the breakdown?
Yes, 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 several, in several steps.
Yeah.
There's nothing to be given off in the enzyme, and then we'll grab a D P in a phosphate.
And and.
That's why I say it's trapped, because this is not using. So it could be actually used to do something else.
And and a bar reaction is where ATP would use the energy taken to do that.
To do something to make something.
Yeah, break support to high energy bonds and uses the energy.
Cuz those aren't, you know, you're not gonna just take amino acids together or something. Um you'll see when you do photosynthesis, plants can do it, you do it, so. But it gets into, we won't get into huge amounts of each other, but there are huge amounts, but at least it'll waste some time.
Okay.
And then plants just start making, you know, when the sun's shining, they just start making, I'm saying, ATP, and another molecule. You plug that in, a D P, and then they, then they use that, those molecules that take. Carbon dioxide out of the air and put it together, we have. Cuz again, you can't just take carbon dioxide and hook it together, they're they're stable, they don't wanna get hooked together, so then, like a sugar. Yeah, of course. So for, so much, you know, we got here, we got a lot of us, we don't have too many. Jerry?
Hi, welcome back. Um I seem to have some bringing that on endogonic and.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Exergonic just means it gives off. Uh it it gives off energy to do the reaction after the give off, and endogonic means you have to put energy in to make it.
Yeah.
So catabolic reactions.
Are endogonic.
Are giving off energy, so they're exergonic.
Yeah.
Anabolic reactions take energy to make them go, so they're endogonic. Is is that, is is, so don't make anything harder out of this. Exergonic, when you when you break something up, you know, and just give it off, that's exergonic. And when you gotta hook things together, you don't want them together, they're forced together.
So it uses energy, energy's taken in.
Okay, that make sense, Jerry?
On the next one.
The next one.
Uh I just wanna, um, clarify something, so when you ask what enzymes are made of, is that active site and the.
Well, oh, what enzyme, oh, did I say what they're made of? No, they're made of proteins. So if I say what they're made of, I meant just, you know, we're made of proteins, or they are proteins, and what are proteins made of? Medium acids.
Medium acids, yeah.
Did I say what they're made of? But it's not a very well stated thing. What kind of molecules an enzyme, it's a protein molecule.
Protein, I like it.
Now. Yes, now, what are functions enzymes?
They're they're catalysts, they're they're force, the force chemical reactions to speed faster.
Much faster, especially when you think about. And then you talk about the, how do they catalyze the reaction? Are you gonna?
Um, yes, uh we're gonna have anything about activation on this class.
Oh, God.
We, cuz it was the last part of my notes.
Yeah, 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 it is, and and was I gonna have, was it on study guide? What did I have in the study, I'm gonna remind myself.
Uh, don't use a textbook, change that, the last one, actually, we talked about the last.
That's on, oh, yes, it's on this one. You see what I have with glycolysis? Oh, yeah, when discussing respiration, glycolysis.
Know about activation and reduction reaction, and that's the answer.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, okay, so, yeah, right here, so, yeah, know about activation, what's it called, reaction, what's the significance of the reaction? Okay, good news, Jerry. I'm ready to cross it out, not, it it it. I'm ready to cross it out, not, I'm, 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 I'm gonna ask that question on this exam, because it really is doing more, I was talking about it on Monday, when we're talking about Krebs cycle. But won't be on this exam.
So there you go, you're stoked. Is is that about it? Cuz I'm about ready to go home and pass out for a while.
Let's, let's go over this again, look at the study guide, you're actually great.
I I'm about to, yeah, so I'm just letting everybody know, if you want any more questions on the video, ask them in the next five minutes.
Okay, here goes, Steve, definitely, so I cro- I said, okay, that second, third paragraph down, so I cross that up. The next one, I'm giving you some information to try to get you to think about it, when discussing cellular respiration, glycolysis, you already discussed, blah, 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 blah. And then it goes on, um, um, fatty acid breakdown, blah, blah, then I said, know about oxidation reduction reaction, so, so that paragraph, you can put for the next exam. That whole paragraph, pretty much.
And then the other one.
And then, then the next one starts with glycolysis, keep that, and then those last two, take, pick out.
Have you, have you guys had to check out the the videos? You want me to send you a link for them? Okay, you should check them out, they'll, it's all this, everything over and over again, so you can just stare and like mindlessly listen to it, it's kinda what I do. It helps, it starts to stick eventually, too.
What, what did you say, what video? Cuz most of them's about diffusion osmosis is labs, so.
Okay.
But what is that?
It's, it's then how the substance can get through cell membranes, know about diffusion osmosis, and what the passive type of being versus active.
Okay, now, what I do want to know though is about channels and pumps, that there are such things as channels and pumps. No, but that's not ch- that's not left for, diffusion osmosis is left for, but but when I said how the substance can get through cell membranes, part of it is are, well, okay, endo, anexocytosis are, are some big things, but for other things, they can go through channels, or they can be forced through by pumps, so, and that I did talk about in, in my, that was And that was under what I talked about, membrane and pho- proteins, what are the functions of membrane proteins? You can't, you remember, those proteins are critical for the function of the cell membrane, you know.
So the pump is, the proteins are pumped through the channel, we give the phospholipid file air?
No, 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 they don't, no, both channels and pump are proteins, think of a channel, think of a channel as just a tube, a protein tube that's running through the membrane, so something can go in or out, through that tube.
They're very selective on what they let through, yeah.
Uh, the pump is just some kind of a mechanism that can grab it on one side of the membrane and push it through the other side.
Okay, so channels is passive?
Yeah, channels are passive. Yeah, and and and, you know, pump, yes, push it down, right? It's an energy, yeah.
Only one more question.
Okay, one more question.
Maybe I'm just confused about the word units in here, but, uh, the molecular molecules, the polymers, and the monomer units?
Yeah.
That, the monomer units are the amino acids.
Exactly, exactly.
Alright. Are we good? I'm good. Um, alright.
Is it a protein, uh, is it an enzyme?
No, enzymes are proteins. And and my guess is, as I told you, maybe half of all the proteins will make an enzyme, making
No. No. Proteins only, yeah, that's just protein. That's it, just protein. Alright. See you later, YouTube.